Citizens, Doug, your presence, Jeff, you're welcome, and the rest of the people. So I'll turn it over to Joe Lorenz. Joe, I do want to say I very much appreciate the work you've done as our budget director for the past seven and a half years, almost exactly.
Well, except for, oh, no.
That comes later.
And I hope you can continue the next.
Now, you're on.
How about the next few minutes?
So you're on.
Okay. So what the purpose of this meeting is to bring people through the budget as submitted, as it rolled up, and have discussion about that as we get to the point where we're ready to take this to a public hearing and to take a proposed budget to the county board for approval. I think first headline I'll start out with is, by the way, things are coming in, I am very confident that we will not have to increase the levy.
Oh, that's great. God, that's great news.
You can leave now, Doug.
Have much less stress now.
Joe, do we know what the revenue, what do you think revenue might be?
Yeah, we're gonna go through that.
Okay, all right. All right, okay.
So let's just talk about the budget timeline. Today, we're having this meeting to review the budget that's submitted and hopefully reach agreement on a final proposed budget. And then the goal would be the week of June 19th is to take that proposed budget and put it into a public notice of a budget hearing, a budget summary that would be published that would provide detail by department or the county budget. And then based on that, there's always like a two-week period of public disclosure and investigation. And so we would shoot for Tuesday, July 10th, for the final budget hearing and approval. And it could all be done that day, assuming that there are no decreases to any of the elected official budgets made that day. All right, so let's go to the next page, page three, where we basically roll up the revenues and the expenses of the budgets as requested by the groups and departments, offices of the county. So the first column is what we adopted last year. There were about $282 million in revenues, and this is the general fund. $282 million of revenues, or no, this is actually operations funded by property taxes. That's the definition of what we're looking at here. And $283 million of expenses. We had a net deficit of about $800,000, which we said was within our comfort zone to live with as, to be potentially covered by reserves if necessary. But this year, so far, we're tracking, revenues are tracking fairly strong. So my hope is that we will come in with very close to a balanced budget this year. So what was requested this year is a 1.6 increase in revenues was projected and a 2% increase in expenses. That meant the net deficit when we rolled up the budget as requested is $1,955,000. So that was the number that we began with, that we're short about $2 million, which in the whole scheme of things, there's been years, you know, when we've been more in that four, four-plus million dollar range. So that's not a terrible roll-up number. I think the budget this year assumed a 4.5% increase in property tax revenues. So I looked at that $1,955,000 and looked at some potential modification. So the first thing I reviewed are the revenue projections, and some of the departments I thought came in was kind of conservative estimates of their revenues for next year. So I talked to the department heads, and we agreed to increase their revenue budgets by a total of $496,000. And that came from the youth center, the treasurer, the clerk of the district court, purchasing and emergency management. So we were able to find about $500,000 of what I think are reasonable revenue increases for budget.
Tell me something, how does the youth center, and I don't mean to ask questions in your presentation, but as others do, it's okay if somebody wants to ask, and Doug, that includes you. But tell me something, the youth center, for example, your increase in their revenues.
Yeah.
Where does that revenue come from?
Primarily grants.
Oh, from the grants, okay. I just, I don't think it grants as much as revenue, you know.
But it is counted as revenue.
Okay, so it would be grants, great.
So there's been a lot of money out there for juvenile justice.
Thank you.
And Brad felt comfortable with that. The treasurer we up because, you know, they get a 1% share of all property tax proceeds. But more importantly, we switched that cash management program. They're taking the excess proceeds now and having them invested by professional money managers. And interest rates are going up, so that's a pretty significant source, too. And that generally helps the revenue number. So that's about $500,000 that we identified. The second piece would be to increase the portion of retiree medical paid by retirees. And we've been doing this kind of gradually over the last few years, where, you know, we're still maintaining the retiree medical program, we're just increasing the percentage paid by the participants of the program. So what this contemplates is that the individual amount paid percentage paid by an individual retiree would increase from 30 to 35% of the total program. That paid by a family or a spouse or, you know, multi-person would increase from 40 to 45% of the total cost of the program. And I think this was something we've had discussions about over the years, and that we're saying we're going to gradually increase this. And this is the year where we kind of are looking to it to increase percentage paid by five percentage points, which would be worth about $225,000.
I read the internal audit that might warrant a veto.
Yes.
How does that gonna affect anything?
It should only help, assuming we put those better controls in.
I saw that, but do you have any dollar I guess?
No, I'm waiting to get the exact numbers from HR, but, you know, in the back of my mind, maybe fix you to $100,000, I think, if I'm about that one sort of rate.
Yeah, so that could actually be decreased if we see the revenue.
Yeah, or, you know, if we put that in place, and, you know, it could really help us from further increases.
Joe, I guess, could you give me, is it possible to put a dollar figure on what it will cost a person, or is it buried and hard to pinpoint? And the other thing, is it necessary? You know, what is our, what is the income now from retiree medical pay?
There's no income, there's no expense. I mean, the net expense the county right now to run retiree medical is over $2 million a year.
Okay, but I mean, when it says increased portion of retiree medical pay, what is it, what is it now, what does it produce now, anything?
Well, let's see, if the total premium this year for retiree only is the...
You can give me this later, I don't want you to take the time.
It's like $646, $746, so 5% of that would be, what is that, like $35?
Okay, that's for how, a year, a month? Okay. All right, and I just don't know, is that necessary? I mean, aren't we paying like, isn't healthcare costs about $30 million or $37 million or something crazy? I mean, I just, I'm worried about, you know, somebody on a fixed income like this, and if it isn't, absolutely dire, you know, we must do it to, because we're desperate, that's one thing. But if we're doing it just because we can, I want to know more about it.
I don't think we can, I think there, maybe other commissioners can jump in here, there was kind of a philosophy that, you know, retiree medical is a benefit right now that you only see in the public sector. It's essentially been eliminated from the private sector. And I thought we were kind of saying we would move, we wanted to maintain the program, but we thought that it should be maintained where the retiree and the county were kind of paying for it equally.
So, you know, not to be argumentative, but... I mean, defined benefit plans are out the window, too, so I mean, that's what's next. I mean, there are a lot of...
As long as we can...
Well, you can afford it, but that's, that's...
Well, I mean, you know, I just, we'll talk further, but I just want to make sure that we, just because others are doing it, I'm not comfortable, you know, we win the court, and we lost, and we won whether, I guess...
We won. This is, remember, we have a Supreme Court ruling, so we can do whatever we want on this.
I know, it's kind of like baking a cake. Go ahead.
But the last time, the last time this came on the floor, we, I remember asking the question, and basically it was, it's going up every year, the cost is going to come. So the fact is, you can hold it off this year, but the next time, the jump, the shock is gonna be bigger. So, I mean, I think last year we ate it.
Last year we ate it.
Last year we ate it. So you can hold it off, but it's going to be bigger, and it's gonna change eventually.
And if you go on a per cap basis, no surprise, but retiree are the most expensive people in our health benefit.
Yeah, I'm kind of there. Okay.
Well, actually, not so much, because you're, once, we only cover people till they're 65, then they go to Medicare.
He's 61.
Oh, that's right.
We may be one of the few counties around the country that does.
Yeah. Go ahead.
I kind of agree with Mike, I don't think that we should do this. And I'm not interested in engaging in a race to the bottom as far as benefits for our employees go. You know, we've experienced loss of personnel in key departments, and I hear all the time, and I don't know if you are in touch with the same people that I am from our staff, about how sensitive this issue is to them. So for the negligible amount that we're talking about here out of a $282 million thing, I'm not gonna go along with that.
Go ahead.
This is not overall benefits, this is just retiree piece.
That's correct.
And even though, and I agree to the sensitivity of it. I don't, you don't want to do it, but the financial deal of it is, this is for, it won't, if anything, it's not gonna hurt recruiting, it'll hurt, it'll help retention. Because the point is that, it's that period between, when we had, I don't know when, Rule of 75 hadn't been out when I, before I came, but it was people leaving at 55 around there. They'll have to consider, we're not cutting the health insurance off, but they would have to consider staying in respects to get that. And I think it's a reasonable deal in regards to keeping it, because we are one of the few counties around the country that's keeping. There is people trying to find plans to fill that gap, and it's an issue, but few, I mean, and I hear this in meetings, few counties around the country do this, and I think you need to keep it, but you cannot go gaps long without doing it, because eventually, they're gonna get a 10% increase if we don't do it to some degree. I mean, we're lucky on whatever the issues have been, but next year, they could have a, somebody can have a benefit in there, and then you have to jump it up bigger than that. So it's almost responsible to try to do it. It's just like the, it's just like doing a property tax assessment. They argue it Diane because it's not done reasonably. If you do it reasonably to some degree, I think you're good.
And I tend to agree with you. The information you just stated about other counties, if you have some things from NACO at some point, you might give that to all of us to look at. Claire, you had a question next, and then Mark.
Well, more comment, it's not all public sectors, and Chris just alluded to that with counties, but my sister is retired from OPS, I mean, the minute she retired, her health insurance had gone. I mean, it's just gone, there's no health insurance for the retirees. And we talked about that, we, every year, we look at the unfunded mandates and, you know, the things we don't have to be doing. And this is one we don't have to be doing, I think we are taking the high road by saying, rather than just cut me off, we're just gonna do it 5% a year. We're going to phase this in, even though we don't have to. And to me, that's the compromise that we put out there to help us get to where we need to be, but without pulling the rug out from under completely either at the same time.
Very good, Claire.
In the lawsuit that we had, the county one and Mike lost.
Oh, that one.
I needed to find that from all the other lawsuits. New employees or new hires do not get that, new retirees do not get their retirement benefits, health insurance today.
They do.
Don't they, Marcos?
Yes.
They still get retiree medical.
Wrong.
Including new retirees.
Right, new retirees, too.
I mean, people who retire before they're 65.
You're getting confused with the pension, I think.
Are you wrong?
It's about time, I, you know, I've been here a few minutes.
Okay, did anyone else have...
I'm sorry. We're coaching everybody's taking over, you know, to me. No, I agree with Commissioner Kavanaugh on this, it is a race to the bottom, and I understand that, but I don't think we have to do this. And I, it is not a big bunch of money, and I understand what Claire's, it makes a good point, but, you know, if I understood you correctly, is this an increase of $35 a month? Or, okay. $35 a month, when you're on a fixed income, if you're getting social security, if it's, you're lucky, if it's $1,000 or $1,200 or whatever, I mean, that's, that's kind of important. And of course, the pension may be something more generous, but $35 a month is a sizable increase for a retired person and the utility bills and all the rest of it. And I just, for $225,000, I mean, maybe it could be, you know, $100,000 or something, I don't know, maybe cut it down, but we're not gonna make that much money off this. And to me, it's kind of sticking them in the eye, you know. And I know that we lost on this, but I remember clearly, I've been around, way over in the election office in the 70s, and I remember that people were told that you will be, we will treat you the same as we do our regular employees. And I know we lost that lawsuit, but that's what we told them, clearly, in writing and orally. So anyway, whatever you think is right, in my conscience, I can't vote for this either.
Well, I think what we'll do is we'll put these things up.
Yeah.
And see what the majority of the commissioners feel we should do.
So I'm gonna state my position, and Chris, you mean?
Completely.
I tend to agree with Chris and what you said, too, Claire. If you don't do it, it's like citizens on their taxes, and I had a guy this morning that was at Wheatfield on his taxes going up 28% or something. You know, we'll be catching up later, and I think if we start to phase it in, it's the right way to try to do it, not all at once. And if we put it off, then we're gonna have, did deal with it at some point in time, and I'd rather start that process. But I think to have it on an agenda where we talk about it and then make a decision is the right thing to do. So that's it. Chris, you didn't have anything else?
No, my only point is, I agree with Mike is saying, it's a deal, but the point is, like, again, I agree, few of them are in a situation where, you know, and I don't know what their situation is, but I doubt, there's a few of them that's probably retired here and working somewhere else. So, you know, everybody doesn't have that option, some of them legitimately, they want to or not, depending on the degree of the labor, but, you know, that whole landscape with the insurance thing has changed to some degree. And right now, for some people, they cut their arm off to pay 35% if they were retired.
And I do think it can help us with retention. And Doug and Jeff, I don't want you to feel like you can't ask something, I mean, we're not gonna let you go 30 minutes or something.
Nationwide taxpayer group like ours are working with taxing authorities like counties and cities and urging them to gravitate towards what the private sector is doing. And one of the things the private sector is doing is urging more people to work until they're 65. And a lot of government entities, they make it, they make it more generous for people to retire before 65, and then they have additional financial obligations. So we support this provision.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Joe, next.
Okay, so, you know, just to put this, assuming that these two modifications would be approved, that we basically identify $721,000 that go against that $1,955 deficit, which is shown on the next page, which brings us to $1,235,000. And I think we've had these discussions that we feel, given the size of our budget and where we are, that we can be comfortable with, you know, up to $1 million of assumption would be funded from reserves. But what happens is that, you know, there's always last-minute add-ons and things like that. So what I assumed is that our target that we could fund from reserves would be $850,000. So if you took that from the $1,234, that leaves us, the amount of expense reductions required is about $385,000, which, in the total scheme of things, really, I don't think is that bad for a budget to make in two of ours. So, you know, it's a little cut, and it's not a hatchet here.
Okay, Commissioner Kavanaugh, your question?
Joe, I know I asked you this downstairs, but just for the record, what's the balance of the reserves today?
Today, the reserves are $29 million, but when we hit our low point again in February, they were down to, I think they leveled out about eight or nine million. And, you know, it's like when you get a bank revolving line of credit, you always look at the low point. And so, well, we have it today, there's seasonality into it, but when we hit our low point, we're keeping, you know, in that eight to $10 million range of reserves as insurance.
So we could, in effect, take the balance of $385,598 from reserves without affecting it by a percentage point?
I mean, that would be a potential, I mean, but the other thing that we do is that when you look at your year-end financials, the rating agencies always see net-net if you've been running a surplus or a deficit. And to the extent that you would run a deficit, then they always say, well, you're spending more than you're taking in, and that's not a good thing, especially if you're AAA rated. So, you know, there's trade-offs there.
Right, but, I mean, we're actually not spending more than we're taking in. I mean, we had this discussion this morning, where we're actually having a very good year on inheritance tax. According to what you told us a little bit ago, we're having a good year on property tax valuations, up 4.5%, which would result in revenue increase. So, you know, I'm just trying to get my head around this, if we have $385 hanging out there, couldn't we include that without moving that dial much at all relative to the reserve balance of $29 million?
It would be catastrophic, I mean, it's just, you know, how comfortable everyone wants to feel.
Okay. My point is, if we did that, say, then we go to the final page, where does that leave us relative to, is the discussion over if we do that?
Yeah, I mean, because the final page just shows, what I said is, we have to find $385,000 of budget reduction, and then you could go to this final page.
And I want to be sure we let some others have a personal go to the final page, because it may be pertaining to clearly, Mark, you had something?
The 4.5% assumption on property increases, is that before valuation protest or after?
That's my net number, and we'll find out the exact number on, I think, August 15th on the final evaluations, but that assume that I think we lose somewhere in the range of 15 to 20% in protests.
Thank you.
Okay, I sort of favor looking at the next page, as you talk about this $384, you know, to maybe look at it when you have a budget this much. I mean, like you said, you're not cutting much. Did you have something, Claire?
Also, okay. All right, why don't you keep moving then? So, you know, the next page really shows you why we have a deficit, and these are the departments, all of these departments came in and presented to the county board at a Tuesday meeting, and you can see their request over target. It's the county attorney, the public defender, the sheriff, the jack. And the issue with the jack is not so much their budget, but it's, you know, kind of a philosophical change this year, where instead of being primarily grant-funded, there's been a shift in the philosophy to take the community-based aid grant and throw that out to community agencies, which means that there would be, you know, a significant amount of more money coming from the general fund to fund the jack. So that's, it's really more of a revenue issue than an expense issue on the jack. GIS has a small amount. CMHC, I worked with Sherry a lot, her number has really come down, so it's only $50,000. But like I say, there's lots of initiatives in mental health going on there, and there's some reductions there. And then, you know, the real big driver is correction, which we all know what's going on over there and the issues. And it's, you know, kind of twofold, it's, their labor expenses are way up because of overtime, and that's like $600,000. But, you know, there's an $800,000 hole created because the jail's so full, we're not even, we've had to cut back on inmates from ICE and US Marshals, which is a significant reduction in revenue. So that, you know, Dr. Foxall's getting it from both sides, but, you know, I give them, I spend a lot of time on their budget with him and Amber, I give them, they are really managing things tightly over there, so.
Okay, Mark, you were next, and then Chris.
At the $50,000 you worked with for CMHC, you know, that won't even hire a psychiatrist, which usually is, what, $126,000 to start? $160,000 to start. What was their original request before you did that?
Oh, I think it was...
It's over 200, I think.
Well, it was, do it like $230,000.
Yeah. We just hired one, by the way, so that's great.
So, yeah, we, so we basically took out about $180,000. And of course, the big potential issue laying out there is the D-Tax Center and what's gonna happen with the...
And I'm concerned about cutting that much out of what they projected there need to be.
Right.
Corrections, did you beat them down? You notice the word beat?
Well, I'll just say, we went down and went through some things, and he made some changes that he agreed to, and this is a lower number than its original number.
By how much?
$700,000.
Ouch. Okay. At the moment, I don't have any other questions.
Chris?
So Patrick, what is he expecting his recruiting class? Or did he, did you add that conversation with him for that number?
I think he, one of the reasons we were able to get a saving is he's always gonna have the recruiting classes, but I think he factored in that he was gonna always have 20 open positions.
But Mike, I guess my question is, is it, can we gamble with the, Mike, just talking to him occasionally and asking where it is, he thinks he got a good class, is it possible to gamble and say, you reduce the over-dow sum because you're gonna have some increased positions for him? And he got a recruitment?
I would not do that at this point, given the conditions over there, given the dynamics over there, like, I, you know, that's the last...
Well, I'm not saying, I'm saying the gamble is, this is my, this is my, I'm saying the gamble is, you reduce it now, but just like you, you have some revenue increase coming in now, do you play the game, and if... And if, I mean, if it's there at the end, we just have to do it as a supplemental. But there's a chance that him hires some new people, reduces the overtime down, and now you do that. And if he, and if he, you know, can go from there. I'm just asking.
Karen, why don't you show the last sheet? This isn't in writing, but when I looked at it, this is kind of how I got there. If you look at the bottom, I didn't do anything to corrections, I just think corrections is in a crisis mode right now.
No, I'm just asking the question. I'm not saying, I'm just asking, is it, is it a gamble that we made? Or, or my, is there a gamble to be made?
It's a gamble, but I, I think it's a bigger gamble than where I, where I went up on top. In my opinion, but.
That's fine.
This is just a suggestion. You guys really have to, and I'll, and I'll give you my philosophy. The county attorney, we just gave him a hundred thousand dollars for the workers' comp attorney. And so this still leaves him with two hundred and fifty thousand dollars extra. One of his biggest components was for the morgue and the corner. And he wanted, like, two hundred thousand dollars extra for that. And I mean, yeah, we, that's, we have to do that at some point. I don't know if we have to do it right now. The public defender, he wanted two positions and more money for forensics. So what I eliminated was the one more junior position. The sheriff, I said he should fund the hundred and fifty thousand for the two school resource officers, and then maybe find the ninety thousand within his overall sixteen million dollar budget. The jack, I kind of just looked at and said, well, you know, maybe they should scale back a little bit, given that there's a change in the funding. And then the other three, I didn't change at all. And like I say, this is just my first attempt on whatever you all think would take place.
And when you say this is your first attempt, this is your attempt to basically be able to fund the three hundred and eighty-four instead of using the reserve or something like that? So that's what it is. Chris?
Okay, so first, Joe, what is the conversation with Sean, those guys being, because the fact is, the jack cut is mostly staffed. So you cut that, you're going to increase your juvenile numbers, which, you know, costs us some more money. So that's one of the things, like corrections and the community corrections program, and, you know.
That's a fun, it is a fundamental shift. I mean, you would have to decide, if you take half, basically half of that funding away from the jack, then that...
It's going, it's going to cost us.
To me, you're crippling it, and you just need to decide if you want to continue it. At that point, you need to decide if you want to continue operating the jack or not, because that's, that's a hit.
I don't think you, I don't think you, you cannot do that. I mean, right, basically, right now, they're in the middle of that evaluation. Now, there could be some changes coming out of that evaluation, but you cut that hundred, you're going to aggravate the other piece for the, the opportunities for, you know, there's an argument to be made that if you had the positions added through that grant where the, where the mental health positions, to be able to get a feel for the kids from there and just other staff. You cut that, you're going to get some feedback from the court and the county attorney office in regards to being able to defer.
And I, I guess with the jack more than any other one, it's philosophical, because when the jack was originally funded and over the years, it's always been primarily grant-funded. And now we're making a kind of philosophical shift in saying that now, now the majority of the money is going to come from the general fund, it's going to be taxpayer-funded. So, but again, that's a philosophical question, so it's whatever the commissioners would deem to be appropriate.
You know, the other thing that's, you know, if every, everything you talk about cutting is going to be sensitive. So anything recommendations Joe or I give is going to be sensitive, and somebody's going to get, potentially not be happy about it. But one of the areas that we have to look at, and how long it's going to continue, the way it's going, is short-term rehab. Because that is five hundred thousand dollars, a five hundred thousand dollar hit right now. Jean Harden feels like she really wants to have a chance to make it work, to turn it around, to make it profit-making, so you can lower the taxpayer burden on the health center. You have to ask yourself cost-benefit, will you get to that point, when will you get to that point, and how much of a profit will it ever make? Because it's, it's half a million dollars a year in the hole right now, and it's been operated for, I don't know, how long have we had it, for a handful of years? So, and again, I know that everybody's got their own priorities, but that is an area I've had some concerns about where we're headed with that, because it's not, not mandated, and there's a lot of other facilities that do it, that operate it, that operate a short-term rehab.
Commissioner Kavanaugh has something?
Chris, were you done? No, I can wait, because I was going to read.
Okay. The corrections number, Joe, does that include our current contract with, I think it's a five million dollar contract with a vendor for health services?
Yeah, and as a matter of fact, they put some assumptions in there that there would be some savings in the new contract.
Okay. And, correct me if I'm wrong, but aren't we thinking of going to RFP on that this year?
Yeah, we're going to do that.
We're getting sued right and left on this thing, and I'm not saying it's justified or not. But for five million dollars, you could hire a lot of medical staff. We own a health center, we have medical staff on, on staff. All I'm saying is, if you wanted to entertain some real savings and a program change other than, you know, the hundred thousand at Jack, that I, I kind of agree with Chris, we're cutting off our nose there despite our face, look seriously, not contracting out for five million dollars, but what you could provide. I've had conversations with healthcare providers, and they're going, are you kidding me? Do you know how many doctors and nurses you could have for five million dollars onsite, twenty-four seconds? That's one thing, and it would take some drilling down in the, in the budget process. Another thing on the short-term rehab, it's a potential moneymaker. And everybody in the healthcare industry makes these work, we're under a new administration there, and I think we're turning the corner. I, I agree, it's been a while that that has been in place, but I don't think it's been as well-managed as it's probably going to be going forward. So, you know, cutting that as a potential revenue source, I think, again, it would have more immediate effects than cutting the Jack budget. And the Jack budget, I think, if you cut that, you're going to see some, you know, revenue increases someplace else, so it might not be as productive. But these are foreseeable consequences on short-term rehab. And the whole model there at Douglas County Health Center is actually a huge revenue source for the county, more than any other department that we have. And the shortfall there relative to, you know, we're talking corrections, additional requests of one point three, that's on top of the tens of millions of dollars of uncompensated corrections services that we provide to the community there that we'll never get back from ICE or anybody else. So I'm just throwing this on the table, that maybe we have an opportunity with the contract expiring on the healthcare provider to corrections, to quit getting sued all the time and possibly bring it in-house and provide as good or better services at less cost. And short-term rehab going forward, I, I believe will more than pay for the investment that we've made there. And, you know, those are a couple of things that I, I think we should look at.
Patrick, you had...
I was going to say, I did have a conversation with Mark Foxall about that just the other day, about whether or not to bring it back in-house, because we were both, and I certainly remember what it was like when we had it in-house. And you, you're still going to get sued a lot, and I think that, he said that most of the jurisdiction, most of the correctional facilities of that nature that we have here don't have it in-house. They do contract it out. Yeah, we're going to get sued. Just because you get sued doesn't mean that you're going to have the liability. I mean, anybody can sue anybody for any purpose, any reason. I think contracting it out from a liability perspective is more prudent than bringing it back in-house. Because that, that's, then you're going to have more exposure, in my opinion, having it done in-house.
Chris?
No, I agree, just because they're, they're credited now by the NCCAC as far as standards. But my thought was, Joe, I guess let me go back and ask again, so this, I mean, with the Jack, I'd rather, I'd rather gamble a year with corrections, and I mean, let's, what if you take just another hundred thousand out? Corrections to balance that with the Jack, because my deal with corrections is, you gamble one year, hopefully you get a year renovations that hopefully opens up some of that for the revenue next year. So you gamble one year with that. But if they go over one hundred thousand, you know, it's such a deal over there. If they go over, I think they're going to go over bigger than that anyway, and I'm, you know, you're going to have to give something. So another hundred thousand in that budget doesn't matter. I can, you know, I can, I can live with the fact with some of the other ones, but I know that one will cost. And if the, and if the, and if the, and if corrections goes over, they're going to go over more than a hundred. So you have to bite the bullet from that. If they save, you get that from it.
So you're saying keep Jack at their request and lower corrections by?
Yeah, because theirs won't be, once theirs is absorbed, theirs won't be there anymore. Because that, that's the conversation I had with everybody, of saying, this is where the committee went with that decree, let me know where you're at.
Yeah.
And I think, yeah.
In order of magnitude, the Jack has an eight hundred thousand dollar budget, corrections has over a forty million dollar budget.
Yeah. I mean, it's easy to absorb. And I think Mark knows, I just think the terms of it could, if they cut Anklin off overtime, you can pay for that.
Mark, you...
I agree, thinking it through for a very short period here. You have five hundred thousand dollars per year, and you multiply that times four or five years. If we take another five hundred thousand dollar loss, and if it has a potential to make a hundred thousand a year, it's going to take five years just to recuperate that five hundred thousand after we finally make it solid. But if we continue losing five hundred thousand, and four hundred thousand, or three hundred thousand, or two hundred thousand, by the time we break even, it's going to be almost impossible to have a zero balance. So, short-term rehab, as far as I'm concerned, we could use those beds for a purpose of taking care of those who cannot take care of themselves. The other thing is, I don't, I, I'd like to, Joe, if you'd send me what people actually asked for in these departments, or these seven departments, what their actual first request was, I'd appreciate it.
Okay. Yes, Chris?
Plus, I think too, that, I mean, if you look at, I don't know, she, she didn't do it a lot, they, they got a little better, but I would, my gut would be, hopefully that evaluation will go at least five overall. Because, and I'm talking about Diane's, I mean, you got a budget at four, my gut is, it, because she's got, it's close to ninety-three. Just by the fact of where it was and what the property value is going to go, she's going to have to take that up higher so as to be in compliance. That's what she said last year. So, and some of them are going to go up because of the hot, the heat of the market, some of these are going to go up. My gut is, we may be closer to five than four. And so, all of us are gambling, because you don't know what she comes in, what the protest is, but, you know, that's just my thought.
Well, there's some, you know, when that book comes around, and the commissioner's supposed to sign it, I spend some time going to get certain things from the folks out there, kind of send them back to me. Some of the things you see in there are really pretty amazing, I mean, they really are. There are other things that I've noticed, I mean, you know, the, you know, the travel, I saw a thing in there today, or last time, last week, over the five thousand dollars for some travel, and, you know, about nine employees went to a meeting, that's just not right, I think, anyway.
That's getting paid out of grants.
What's that?
That's a grant payment.
What?
That's a grant payment.
Well, it may or may not be, but the point is, if it is, they could be using it for something else, I don't know, figure it out. There's got to be a way to, I just don't like how those things go, and also, there's a chair in there for several thousand dollars and stuff like that going on, plus construction, you know, we, we paid to have the, an office, a registered D through Model V. I know that came out of another cost center too, but, you know, who else is doing construction and all these sort of things? There's also a person working for us in the juvenile system that is making about twelve hundred dollars a month to give some kind of assessment for kids coming in, whether they're alcoholics or not, or some such crazy thing. And I think what it is, it's a sentimental hire. It's a former state senator, you know, who wears bedroom slippers, frankly. And anyhow, so he's over there making twelve hundred dollars a month, get this to Jack, you know, and cut those by twelve hundred. I mean, there are so many things that need to be done, you know, it, it just, it needs to happen. And I, I passed out something that I want to bring up if I could, and I'm sorry if there's not enough, there should have been exactly eighteen or so, but. What's the matter? It's the, it's about nine-one-one, and, Joe, I want to ask, how many, have, have you budgeted any nine-one-one entry positions for twenty eighteen?
Yeah, you know, what is in there are the five new fire dispatch people.
So that's the, the ones that Mr. Streeter wants, he wants six, is that right, of those people? Okay. Well, if you look at the bottom line under there, the second category, entry level nine-one-one operators, five, six new hires, the cost is, for a year, two hundred and forty thousand, seven hundred and thirty-nine. And that's for six, and if you cut it back to five, it's two hundred thousand, six hundred and sixteen dollars. You save forty thousand, one hundred and twenty-three dollars and twenty cents. And of that forty thousand plus, the city pays eighty-five percent, which is thirty-four thousand, one hundred and four dollars and fifty-five cents. And the county pays fifteen, which is six thousand, eighteen dollars and forty-five cents. I was out there a week ago Friday, and it was busy. And I sat down with Mr. Streeter, and I'll be glad to tell each one of you in small groups what he said to me about the call volume. And I'm not going to use this language, because this is a public meeting, and it wasn't, it wasn't improper language, it was candid. And I don't think it's the sort of thing that I want on the public record, to be honest with you. But this is a very serious matter. It is very important that they be adequately staffed. While I was there, one of the callers, sitting in this round circle, he's cleaned the place up pretty well, had to take a call from someone who was trying to give CPR, while she was on the phone trying to tell him how to do it, and they're trying to transfer to a healthcare worker and all this stuff. It was, it was difficult, her phone was tied up for some time. And what I, he was concerned about is when this happens, if, you know, Karen calls and her, her relative of hers collapsed on the floor and she's calling for emergency help, that call could go unanswered for up to a minute, a minute and a half or longer. And if that happens, that could mean a very serious problem for the person on the floor, as well as perhaps even our, our facility. So I, I pass this out, because I want you to all look at this and consider it, and what the cost is particularly. But if we've got five in there, and he says we need six, I think we ought to honor him. He's a really terrific new, just like we've done with the health center and some of the other places. This guy is really on top of it. And E nine-one-one is coming, and video is coming, all these things are coming. We need experienced people, this can take a while to get them up to speed. I think we need six. So I respectfully submit this to you, and ask you to consider this, and to put this in as part of the budget.
Is that an additional one he asked for?
No, he's asking, he, he wants six, so this is what he's asked for.
So I'm correct, Joe, we, I know they pay eighty-five percent, so the cost of adding a six is going to cost us...
So let me tell you where we, where we are on the budget. This Friday, Dave Seder is presenting his budget to the mayor and her cabinet, and they've invited me. And I actually have taken the position, as we just discussed, that the city pays eighty-five percent, we pay fifteen percent, that I'm going to defer and see what the city of Omaha decides. And Mike's issue is, is kind of, but the real hot point on this issue, we got is the fifth precinct, and that...
It's a ways off.
But it's actually in this next budget, if you start, they, they're talking about hiring in January nineteen. And what they're calling for from nine-one-one would be additional five to six, depending if you think a twenty-four-seven position has to be funded with five or six people. Is that they're asking for another five or six people to fu, fu, fund the fifth precinct. But there is not even consensus within the city of when that would be. And so that's what a lot of this discussion would be, because not only is it another five or six people, it's another two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of equipment for it. And so he's going to come in and present to the mayor and her cabinet on Friday, they've invited me to that meeting. And like I say, from my position, I am kind of, right now, taking, that I'm going to defer to what the city wants, because like you say, to us, it's fifteen cents on the dollar.
Okay, let me mention to you, I spoke to the mayor about this, and she was quite concerned. Okay, let me mention to you, I spoke to the mayor about this and she was quite concerned, so I intend to be at that meeting as well.
I'll sit next to you.
I mean, well, that's fine, but I'm just saying, uh, we're talking about, you know, one person where we contribute under seven thousand dollars and it is extremely important. So, I, I, I think, you know, I can understand Joe's position, wants to cut this thing way down to where he, you know, wants, and he does a great job at it, all that stuff. This is a foolish cut, so we need to give him what he needs, get these people on board, online, cut the overtime, all the rest of it and get these people on the job and I submit this to you and ask you to consider it.
We're not cutting them though, are we?
Huh?
Are we cutting them?
No, but he's, he's cut the whole budget, so, yeah, I'm just asking for six thousand dollars, Chris.
No, what we're talking about is.
I think he's good.
What we're talking about, I think, is, do we add a sixth person to nine-one-one or do we go with five? If the city's, it costs us, rate roughly six thousand dollars except you have some equipment, I assume.
But Dave. You can put the money in at six thousand, but just keep in mind that if the city says no, he gets the six thousand, he doesn't get his sixth person.
But they, but.
Now, wait a minute, if it's the county, I don't want to succeed what they decide to do.
The city controls this.
They do control.
Yeah, because they pay eighty-five percent, so, yeah, you can fund the six.
Hey, kids, we're talking about thirty-four thousand dollars, let's just move off this subject, keep it in the back of your head. There's no need to make a decision today, but this is really not even peanuts. So, I'm just saying, we have a very qualified director who's pushing the button, saying, I need this and I need it as soon as possible. And I've seen the figures, let me leave it at that.
I agree with you, I agree, but downstairs, that needs to say that they agree with us.
Right, well, but we need to go there as a unified group to say, we think six is the right number, so that we get the city to go along. Now, Doug, I'm gonna let you talk, if you wanted to talk.
I've been informed by two public service commissioners that they reconfigured the formula of how much money we get rebated to Douglas County. So, can we use some of that money to fund this?
Oh, why not? We, our, our part anyway.
Joe, can you answer?
I, I know that they've been talking about that, I've never gotten a revenue figure.
We don't either.
All right, Chris, you wanted to say something?
Yeah, I, I agree on being united, but the fact is, Dave asked for five.
Well, the, if you use both, the Douglas County Sheriff, uh, Omaha Fire Department, Omaha Police, when they say they need to staff twenty-four-seven, they say five people sta- staffs a twenty-four-seven position. Mr. Seder's taking the position that he needs six people to staff.
So, he, he's, okay, I'm fine, if, if that's what.
So, I think we should be unified in saying, we think it should be six, you can correct whatever I say.
But PJ, while you're on that.
And we ought to go there unified, but then the city can say, hey, we don't think so, we do five and they're in charge of it.
Right.
Right?
Well, from the money perspective, yes, they don't give us the money, then, then we would have to, you could throw more money into it, I mean.
No, but that doesn't, yeah, that, that's. Our fifteen percent is in a funded position.
Don't forget the city council too, I mean, they're not gonna stand idly by and sit there and hear, we're gonna fight over thirty-four thousand dollars whether or not the phone get answered up.
I agree with you.
And the other thing we have is a strong advocate in Commissioner Boyle, the council, city and the council to do it. So, I say, we worked at getting the six.
Yeah.
And you're pretty passionate about this.
Oh, I am, I, I think he's qualified, I don't, I want him to be, I want it to be staffed adequately, I don't want something to fall off the table on this.
Okay, so.
The contracts of this year though?
Yes.
They know that.
Yes, and they've talked that they wanna renegotiate some aspects of it, I don't know the specifics, but they have said they wanna renegotiate some aspects of it.
Yeah, the only thing is, I think, I, I just think you, I don't, I don't think you say, I think you keep it in the back of your mind, because the fact is, the last time the, the census has been recalibrated on that, it's had to be over. It hadn't been done since I was here, so that's thirteen years. They've annexed tremendous amount more property, so the fact is, is that this is probably the cheaper way for them, because if you redo the contract and you include what they, uh, have, at least what we have, odds becomes less and theirs becomes more.
And I don't know that that's true, I think that that's.
Well, whatever it is, theirs is gonna become more.
Well, I called, had Kathy Allen call me some numbers, actually, the population is like eighty-three seventeen, but the call volume is like eighty-eight twelve.
And we go on population in the contract, so.
But the majority of the, but, you know, then you could open it up and say, well, let's do it on call volume.
Mm-hmm.
Eighty-eight percent of the call volume is coming from the city.
Okay, I think we've talked it, we know where we are, Claire, did you have anything you wanted to say?
Uh, whether it's five or six, we've gotta do it, I'm glad, and we told them a year ago, we were gonna do this this year. And nine-one-one user committee is, this has to be done.
So, I mean, the, the fire dispatch is in, the real issue is the fifth precinct, when that gets in.
And that kinda gets touched, because that's really the city call, I think, the precinct.
Okay, so, what else, Joe, we got that resolved?
Well, we discussed it.
No, I mean, we're going, we're gonna go there, basically, on Seder's request, and we go for the six.
I think what you don't have resolved is how to get to the, the three hundred and eighty-four thousand dollar home.
Right, that's the next part. And I sort of, so that I'm clear and don't just let everybody talk and I just say where I am. I favor trying to look, when you look at the total budget and the amount of it, to try to come up with four hundred thousand out of a three hundred million dollar budget, there should be a way to do it, in my opinion. And when you're watching what the schools and others are trying to do, we need to try to figure out how to do it without going into some other fun.
I, I agree too, and what, what has to happen and I intend to do is sit down with Joe and PJ after, I've done a lot of digging. And there are places to cut on this budget that won't hurt anybody, some new furniture, some, you know, we've approved a bunch of furniture today.
Or whatever.
All this other stuff is out there and, uh, you know, we have never really sat down and done this. And the thing with the city is that, you know, Steve Curtis is doing the same thing Joe does, he wants to drive down the, you know, he wants to look, uh, excuse me, Joe, but you need to look good in front of the, the people that you work for and that's what Steve's doing, he wants to show the mayor that he's a conservative guy and he can make everything balanced. And this thing, Joe could pick this money up and, you know, a hair's breadth, because with the budget our size, you know, he could not have a problem coming up with that kind of money. So, we're not gonna, we have a, we have a balanced budget right now, as far as I'm concerned, and probably could be even a larger deficit. I mean, it's just, you know, that much money falls off the table and construction things and all this other stuff that we can take a look at and cut. And that's what I intend to do. And if we have to, maybe we'll have to start laying off employees in some places that doesn't matter, I mean, you know, some places where we can cut it out, I don't know.
I'll, I'll float one other thing out that's potential, I was just looking at inheritance tax proceeds today. And, you know, we're taking four million to fund the, um, property request, but it looks like the budget's gonna come in really more like four and a half billion over on inheritance tax. I mean, in my me- mind, it could be a one-time thing, but we could use four hundred thousand dollars of inheritance tax and a transfer and cover that.
I mean, the only caveat to that, Joe, and I, I don't necessarily disagree with you, the only caveat, and I know you know this, is we're talking about ongoing expenses and not one-time capital expenses, so, that's the one concern.
I still say that if I'm giving Claire Duda three hundred million to run his spa and I can't find, you know, four hundred thousand.
Well, we can, PJ, but it's a question of which, we're getting four commissioners to agree, like, I threw out short-term rehab, that, boom. Now, I'm not saying you should do that necessarily, you could throw out any number of things.
Well, that's what we're gonna be working on and talking with Joe about.
I'm not, I'm not, I, you know.
Yep.
We could, we could do it, we could, if you told, gave Joe and I the decision, it's done, by the end of the day.
It's done right now.
Well, I could have it done yesterday.
Chris, Chris wants to do it, go ahead, Chris.
If you're saying it's there, I think you suck it up for the one time and by time, because my thought is, you hope in the year, um, renovations goes they do in the jail, if they do, that should put us closer to being back online with ICE. I think, if they get the offices, some of that'll go down. And, you know, I think, right now, you're in a situation with the housing market where you're in good shape. If we can, if you can take it out in one hit, I would, I would do it all in one hit, because you're not gonna have some of that stuff next to you with the Jack. And I think hopefully, if Don and these guys can present some of this, this stuff that we've been talking about with meetings, hopefully you can relieve some pressure to other places, but, um, you know, if, if we could, I would, I would do the one. Four hundred million hit in that budget is small change.
Four hundred thousand.
Yeah, I mean, four hundred thousand, so, that's, I would, I would take that.
And like I say, it, it's not even general reserves, it's inheritance debt.
I agree.
Did you wanna say something?
A quick comment and a quick question, um, Joe, is there an updated list on mandated versus non-mandated services?
Never have a list.
Okay, can I get a copy of that?
Sure. And LB six oh five.
And, uh, my comment is, the state of Nebraska does something called desk audits, where they go through every department and they see if everybody who's working there really does eight hours of work and that's a good way, they, they created, uh, you know, they decreased no busy employees. So, I wonder if the county would do something like that. You go through every department and agency and you do desk audits and every employee has to prove that they do eight hours.
Good luck with the eight elected offices on that one, not to speak for the elected official.
The registered D's.
I'll let you do the one on that one, you can go back on that one.
The other thing I'm gonna tell you for sure, and I'm working on it with state senators and they know it, this idea they, that they, that they go out mandated by the statute every six years to all these properties is ridiculous. And I know some of you already know, I mean, there's people that have two people coming out to their yard to walk around their yard near Elmwood Park and, um, looking at, did you do this, can I come in your house, and so on, they didn't let him in the house. But that's happened in the last two weeks, it's just a waste of people, truthfully, when you got Zillow and all the other things you can do with the technology today and satellites. And Doug, I'll hope that you might be helpful with state senators on that issue.
Well, we would, they have my house, three things wrong with the assessments, number of rooms and other things.
That's because you didn't let them go through looking at the box.
But, you know, you know, the other thing too, if you go to Turk and you haven't let them in your house, that's the first thing Turk asks you. And did you let them in the house, you say, no, they're, you're dead. So, I mean, you know, yeah, I had a guy call me, he was at, I'll tell you, was at, uh, Ben Breakfast over on Thirty-Ninth and Dodge.
All right, so we wrap this up, I first thank you again for being here, Dan, was there anything you wanted to say?
Uh, well, if you guys, uh, you know, I can't, Chris Boyle was talking about like furniture expenses and cell phones and all that, I mean, we could run reports like,
Yeah.
Uh, by a department and by a, a cost code of what they spent, uh.
And Dan, you know what, by you just talking, which is good, I think it'd be great to have Dan there, maybe when we talk about a few items and you might think about some good constructive suggestions from Mike and I, because you're smarter than both of us.
I'm not talking to Dan about, I've got some ideas already.
So, we'll talk about that, okay, maybe you can be there with us a little bit to get some thoughts.
Sure.
Okay, Mark?
Yeah, Doug, do you use the search on our, uh, county clerk site, how we're spending our money?
Yeah, we look at the website.
And the one we developed a year and a half, two years ago.
Yeah. How much is the title on that one?
It's, uh, annual supplier payments, um, it's just a dashboard, we have calendar year twenty-sixteen expenses and calendar year twenty-seventeen expenses.
It was annual supplier.
Payments.
Payments.
I, I've talked about that at the meetings a number of times, it took us about two and a half, three years to get it online, but we have a searchable database that you can look at and see how much Mark Fab's spent on traffic, is that correct, Dan?
If you were, if we were reimbursing you, uh, yes, I mean, if we use a county credit card and it shows up to under First National or, you know, but, yes, what he's saying is true, it's just, uh.
Housing, it's not always apartments and agencies or.
Yeah, they have it, uh, by vendor name, department name, I guess, organization.
Doug, I fought for that for almost three years before I got paid for it. The, the other thing is, um, it's not a hundred percent accurate, I'm gonna use Marianne, Chris as an example. The county pays for the travel and we're reimbursed by make-up.
Oh, sometimes, I do, she gets off.
So, it might look like she's spending more than she is.
Okay.
But you can't measure the reimbursement, because that was the general fund, so you can't take it as gospel. Take it as general guide.
Okay.
Uh, things had to reimburse by grant funding.
And it actually makes money, because when I was doing it, we were making money off it.
Travel more than.
We can wrap this up and then we've got another meeting here, one is locked.
Yep.
Who's chairman of that committee?
Me.